All right, we have reconvened from closed session and there is nothing to report out. So we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:02 PM. And that takes us to the regular meeting. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, August the 23rd, 2023, and it is 6:02 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. Meeting is being closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, August 25th at 1:00 PM and Monday, August 28th at 1:00 PM as well. And Channel 14, previous meetings can be viewed online at www.ellgrovecity.org or youtube.com backslash Metro Cable 14. For members of the participating audience who have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card. Those are the blue cards that can be found at the back of the chamber and provide them to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will move on to our roll call for this evening, and I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spees.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
And all members are present.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite up Angela Spees with the CCSD to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, good to see you this evening. At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is closed session.
And for our regular meeting, there are no closed session items that will move us on to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, and that first item being 4.1, A Proclamation Recognizing August 2023 as American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month.
All right, wonderful. I would like to call up Ahmed Ragab. Ahmed, if you can come up to the podium. And today, we are going to be presenting this to you, American Muslim Appreciation Awareness Month for August 2023, whereas enriched by the unparalleled diversity of its residents, the city of Elk Grove takes great pride in supporting individual religious freedoms and is strengthened by the diverse religious, political, and cultural traditions of its residents, including Americans who practice Islam. And whereas Muslims around the world and in the United States specifically constitute a racially and culturally diverse group that is bound together by a shared belief in diversity as strength and unity as power. And whereas the Muslim American Society Sacramento Chapter is a dynamic charitable, religious, social, cultural, and educational organization with a mission to move people and nurture lifelong, God-centered agents of change and a vision to create a vibrant, American Muslim community striving for a just and virtuous society. Whereas MAS established the Muslim American Society Community and Youth Center and opened their center doors to the Elk Grove community in June 2010 and served the city of Elk Grove and greater Sacramento region. Whereas MCYC managed by Ahmed Ragab provides social, educational, spiritual, and recreational programs in the Muslim community with unique programs and services that seek to develop youth and in turn, the greater society. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims the month of August 2023 as American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month and recognizes the invaluable contributions of the MAS Community and Youth Center and its manager Ahmed Ragab through the center's social and spiritual empowerment programs serving the Elk Grove community and the Sacramento region at large. Congratulations, sir. Would you like to say something?
Forgive me, I'm not very versed in this. Tried to keep it super short. In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful, God Almighty tells us in our holy book, a beautiful verse, and I'll read it in Arabic, and then I'll translate. Oh mankind, indeed we have created you from male and female and made you people and tribes that you may know one another. Indeed, the most noble of you in the sight of God is the most righteous of you. Indeed, Allah, our God, is the all-knowing and the all-aware. Today's recognition, and my belief, and my humble understanding, is a manifestation of this, where we, as different tribes, different faiths, different nations, come together to learn more about one another, understand more about one another. And there is no favoritism or elitism between us. The only way to distinguish ourselves is to continue to work and strive in having good morals, good faith, and working to serve humanity in a better way. I appreciate what the city of Elk Grove is doing in recognizing our faith, in recognizing this month, and in recognizing our efforts to better this community for everyone in Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come down there.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Everybody.
No, 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 no.
Sister Helena, this is for the community.
There is one more, there is one more gentleman. He's hiding there. Come on, come on, come on.
All right, our next item is a proclamation recognizing September 2023 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I wanted to jump in here. Mr. Raleigh Swingle has brought this item forward for numerous years in order to receive the item. Unfortunately, he sends his regrets that he was not able to make it this evening. He did note to me that he may have some representatives, so I did just want to open up to the floor if Mr. Raleigh Swingle had sent anyone in order to receive the item this evening. And I'm not seeing anyone reacting to my statement, and so I would take it that he wasn't able to coordinate someone coming. But I'll make sure to touch base with Mr. Swingle and make sure that he gets a copy of the proclamation.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor, is it possible, I mean, he's been unable to make it the last few times due to scheduling conflicts. Is there perhaps a way that we can?
Take it to him?
Take it to him. I would, you know.
That would be nice.
Given prostate cancer and treatment and all of that stuff.
We would make ourselves available to make that happen.
Yeah, I will make contact with Mr. Swingle and see what we have in the realm of possibility.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you for the suggestion. All right, next up is our public comment. And first up is the Wilton Rancheria, followed by Ronald Wyman.
My name is Joshua Green. I'm the Vice President of Government and Community Affairs at Sky River Casino. And tonight, our President and Chief Operating Officer at Sky River Casino, Chris Tabase, and I are here on behalf of Wilton Rancheria. We'd like to just start by acknowledging our partnership with the city of Elk Grove. And as part of that partnership, as you know, we have ongoing commitments in terms of both mitigation but also funding for community benefit. And so tonight, as we marked last week, our one-year anniversary of being open at Sky River Casino. Tonight, we are here to present to you the first installment of four checks that you will receive this year, and tonight's installment is for $1 million to that benefit. And so I'm going to turn the microphone over here to my boss, Chris Tabase.
This one's tough to catch. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, on behalf of the Wilton Rancheria, the only federally recognized tribe here in Sacramento County and their people, and all the team members, the 1,600 great team members at Sky River are more than happy to be here to give you, to present this check to you tonight. It's a sign of a lot of really good things to come. All of you pretty much aware of what we're doing over there. It's been really successful for the first year. We're really proud of it. We're especially proud of the relationship and the support we get from the city. Again, thank you very much for everything, and on behalf of the tribe in Sky River, I'd like to present you with a check for $1 million for this quarterly payment.
Oh, thank you. Would you like us to come down?
Yeah.
All right.
If you take a picture, you can have the check.
All right, next up is Ronald Wyman, followed by Justine Raga.
Good evening. I feel like a Debbie Downer because my presentation isn't quite up to par with the previous ones, but I'm here due to a family problem. My name is Ronald Wyman. I'm here to address the city of Elk Grove's lack of action in the matter of elder abuse and neglect against my 92-year-old mother-in-law, Jean Lawton. Her abuser is her son, Robert Lawton, who we refer to as Bob. Bob moved, Bob lived with Jean for the last 30 years. Shortly after, oh, he's married, I'm going to skip some of the stuff that's not pertinent. He has taken advantage of Jean mentally, financially, has destroyed her home, made it unlivable. He has a 16-year-old daughter that lives with them, and the house is just loaded with garbage and mold and animal feces. And it's about a month and a half ago, Jean fell down a few times within a couple of weeks, and help was called out and made entry in the house only one of the three times, and they did not report it, the conditions of the home. And so had the home, she's 92 years old, not been cluttered with garbage, she wouldn't have these falls, and now she's out of the home in a care facility, but she would like to go home. And so he has not allowed, for the last two years, he has not allowed anybody besides his two youngest children to enter the home and has hoarded and gotten out of control. He has also neglected to care for Jean in the most basic ways, which include taking care of her regular doctor appointments and replacing her cellphone. It's been broken for over five years. And when we offered to help with this problem, she said, oh, Bob's going to take me to get a new phone next week, and it's just been one of these ongoing problems. So there's been times where she has been home without any contact with, you know, either medical or even just basic stuff like internet or TV. When he is not sitting around doing nothing, he is ranting and raving about how badly his life has turned out and how he wants to kill people, considers enemy which frightens Jean, makes her feel like a prisoner in her own home. His anger issues and destructive behavior have driven a wedge between him and the rest of the family, which has unfortunately isolated Jean from us out of fear. In June of this year, Jean's knee gave out, which was when they came to pick her up off the shower floor. She was taken to Windsor Elk Grove Rehab Center and would not be discharged until she had care set for home health to come into her home, would have been sent out to the house for an inspection to deem it safe for her to return. Oh, sorry.
I'm going to invite you, sir, to connect with our Chief of Police, who can assist.
Okay, thank you.
So he's there, and he'll meet you out in the hallway or in the back.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck, sir.
All right.
Next up is Justine Raga, followed by Kelly Lee.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. I'm here to update the city on Musical Mayhem Productions, a 501(c)(3) educational nonprofit. MMP provides our Elk Grove community with a space where every student learns the basics of theater education. Students from 4 to 19 can enroll in a workshop where they rehearse for two months and perform a show either at Casuma Oaks or 24th Street Theater. But in addition to putting on great shows throughout the year, Musical Mayhem has a Master Academy, an 11-month program that students can develop their skills in acting, dance, and vocal. This season, 127 students have enrolled in the Master Academy, split among four levels. And we have students all the way from Galt to Modesto, coming out to Elk Grove to our community because we're the only program around that offers this wonderful program for the kids. The four levels, Level One has a culminating experience traveling to Disneyland. Disney is one of the largest employers of performance, so yes, Disney. Our Level Ones participate in the Imagination Campus Workshops focusing on music and dance. Our Level Twos participate in the Junior Theater Festival in Atlanta, where theater groups from across the nation gather to showcase a 15-minute cut of a junior musical with the opportunity to get recognized, which MMP has done numerous times. Level Threes go to Disney World for the Imagination Campus Workshops over there, and Level Fours get to go to New York, and they get to take classes with Broadway Up Close. They see some shows and experience the performing atmosphere in the Big Apple. They also perform in the Junior Theater Festival West here in Sacramento, and they have the opportunity to learn from professionals in a master class. This first this year was with Alex Joseph Stewart just last week. He's a New York-based actor, former company member of the Sacramento Ballet, and a graduate of the Pacific Conservatory Theater with many theater credits. He recently performed with Broadway at Music Circus and Music Man, Addams Family, and Ragtime. My son really enjoyed the choreography that Mr. Stewart led during this recent master class. Our Master Academy students have a unique learning experience that our city should be proud of. Currently, Elk Grove does not have a theater. So our two asks is that we secure a space for our very own theater, and our second ask is to come out and see some shows to support our youth. Our next shows are September 1st and 2nd with Finding Nemo Jr., September 15 to 16, Nine to Five Jr., Dolly Parton, and September 20 to 30, Shrek Kids. More info at mmpkids.com, and thank you for your support, and I hope to see you there.
All right, thank you for that update. Next up is Kelly Lee.
Good evening, and dear Mayor and council members of city of Elk Grove. On behalf of NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce and community partners of Little Saigon in Sacramento, I am here to request your support and event grant that we missed for the deadline for our upcoming Mid-Autumn Festival as well as Lunar New Year Festival. NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce, COA, Asian Pacific American Advocates, and Community Partners of Little Saigon, Sacramento is a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting cultural diversity and community engagement. We have been organizing these festivals for several years, attracting a large number of attendees from our local community. These events are served as a platform to celebrate, showcase the rich traditions, customs, and heritage of our community. The Mid-Autumn Festival and Lunar New Year Festival are two of the most significant cultural celebrations in our community. They bring together families, friends, and neighbors to celebrate and enjoy traditional performances, music, dance, art, exhibitions, and culinary delights. These festivals create a sense of unity, cultural pride, and provide an opportunity for local businesses to connect with our diverse audience. We believe that the city of Elk Grove shares our commitment to supporting local initiatives and promoting community engagement. The grant would not only contribute to our success of these festivals, but also help us continue our mission of providing and preserving, promoting our cultural traditions. We kindly request your support in the form of financial assistance, in-kind contributions, or any other support that the city of Elk Grove deems appropriate. The grant will be acknowledged through various promotional materials, including event banners, social media campaigns, press releases, and our official website. Additionally, we would be honored to display the city's logo prominently during the festivals, ensuring maximum visibility and exposure to our diverse audience. We understand that the city of Elk Grove receives numerous sponsorship requests, and we genuinely appreciate your consideration of our proposal. We firmly believe that your partnership will not only benefit our organization, but also enhance your brand's visibility and reputation within our community. We would be delighted to discuss details of sponsorship further and explore how we can create a mutual beneficial partnership. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to possibility of collaborating with the city of Elk Grove and making our Mid-Autumn Festival and Lunar New Year Festival a truly memorable event. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. If you can email me the information, and I'll share it with our staff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, that is the final speaker. So we will go ahead and close the public comment and move over to our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Jason Vermaat, city manager. Several items to report on this evening, a lot of different upcoming events and activities. First item is to keep the community safe. Our police department will have additional officers on patrol through Labor Day looking for drivers suspected of driving under the influence of alcohol and/or drugs. The additional effort is part of the National Enforcement Campaign. Drive sober or get pulled over. Funding for the additional enforcement is provided by a grant from the California Office of Traffic Safety through the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. Explore Elk Grove and the city are offering the chance to get a taste of diversity and great deals during Diversity Dining Week, September 1st through the 10th. Local eateries are offering special discounts and promotions with the Elk Grove Local Pass, a free mobile passport. Learn more and get your free pass at elkrovelocalpass.com. Elk Grove Multi-Festival is on the horizon. The community is invited to participate, travel around the globe without leaving home as the city's Diversity Inclusion Commission, Kaiser Permanente, and other local partners host the 11th Annual Elk Grove Multicultural Festival on Saturday, September 9th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at District 56. This is Elk Grove's premier cultural celebration. We'll offer exhibits from nearly 100 vendors, cultural organizations, two stages of entertainment, an art show, food court, and more. The event kicks off with a colorful parasol parade and opening ceremonies at 10:00 AM. Details are on our website. City and SMUD will partner to offer an electric test ride and home energy savings expo event on Saturday, September 16th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at District 56. This free event will offer visitors the opportunity to test drive electric vehicles and get a free food truck lunch and test the ride, test ride electric bikes for a chance to win one of their own. Experts will be on hand to share information on programs, rebates, and incentives supporting sustainable landscaping and energy-efficient homes. The city, in partnership with the District Attorney's Office and the new Elk Grove Community Prosecutor, is hosting the District Attorney's Youth Academy in Elk Grove, beginning September 24th through December 14th. The program offers the opportunity to learn about the criminal justice system, hear from criminal justice partners, and discuss issues affecting today's youth. Public Works Team conducted a sweep last week to inspect more than 14,000 city streetlights following reports of some bad bulbs. About 50 LED bulbs made by the same manufacturer failed and displaying blue and purple lights in some areas. The lights are under warranty, and crews will be replacing them. Residents can report a bad bulb by calling the city's maintenance hotline, 916-687-3005, or report the problem on our app, See Click Fix. A new online survey is open this week as part of a project to develop an inclusive community participation toolkit. The toolkit will be used to help staff increase engagement with the community and local projects and programs. We invite residents to share their experience working with the city and share ideas on how we can do better. A link to the survey is now available on the city's Facebook and Nextdoor feeds. And finally, Rec Swim at our Elk Grove Aquatic Center is open on weekends through Labor Day. Monday, September 4th, from 1:00 to 5:30. Drop-in rates for those five years and older is $8 and $5 for those ages 2 through 4. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you for that great report. Any questions or comments? All right, no questions, thank you, sir. Next up is our consent calendar items. I'd like to open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anybody signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion.
Move Consent.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is Item 8.1, a public hearing.
And that item's actually for public hearings. It's going to be for a series of community facilities, districts, and special assessment districts, as will be detailed by staff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Vijay Misriya, financial analyst for the city of Elk Grove. I'm here this evening with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. The city maintains eight special tax districts which provide funding for infrastructure and services such as police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting, and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new developments project approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary accordingly to geographic location and building use. The special tax districts are subject to annual rate adjustments. On June 28, 2023, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex the parcels as shown on your screen. 838633 Beta Road Parcel Map, 8679 Sheldon Road Parcel Map, 31 Tap, and live storage expansion projects into special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearing. The projects are being proposed for annexation into the following various special tax districts. CFD 2002 Police Services, CFD 2006-1 Maintenance Services, Street Maintenance District Number 1, Zones 3, Street Maintenance. Lastly, Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2, Stormwater Drainage and Maintenance. This is the 69th annexation into CFD 2003- This is the 69th annexation into CFD 2003-2, the 92nd annexation into 2006-1, the 51st annexation into Street Maintenance District One Zone Three, and the 62nd annexation to Stormwater Drainage. All these assessments will be levied going forward forever. The first project here we have is 8633 Beta Road Parcel Map, which consists of two single-family units located northeast of Sheldon Road and Bratchell Road. The second project is 8679 Sheldon Road Parcel Map, which consists of one single-family unit located northwest of Sheldon Road in Elk Grove Florin. The third project we have here is 31 Tap, which consists of 0.25 non-residential acres located northeast of Elk Grove Boulevard and Elk Grove Florin Road in our historic Old Town. Lastly, the fourth project, Life Storage Expansion, which consists of 8.02 non-residential acres located southwest of Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman Road. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration, and as much is appreciated, I'm available for questions.
Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2003-2 Annex 69 open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for CFD 2003-2 Annex 69 is closed, and look for a motion.
Motion A1.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Indeed, of three possible votes, three affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the City of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Motion A2.
All those, oh, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion A3, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax in the 69th annexation to the Casamnes Facilities District Number 2003-2 Police Services and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.18.010.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are now on to our second public hearing. I would like to declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 92 open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 92 is closed.
Motion B1.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion B1, adopt resolution calling a special election to submit the question of levying a special tax within...
Just a little bit before we go too much further, I just, I have to make a formal announcement for...
The ballot tabulation, please.
And just as these are election proceedings, they do have a sequence that we do. And so my statement for the actual election is of 13 possible votes, 13 affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the City of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration. Vice Mayor Spies.
Most of you won.
There we are.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You mean B2, right? Because we're on B2.
That was B1.
Now we're advanced to B3. This is the ordinance of the action.
Okay, who lost his place? My apologies. Motion B3, now I got to read this one. Introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only of an ordinance levying and apportioning a special tax in territory annexed to Community Facilities District Number 2006-2006-1 Main and Services Annexation Number 92, amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our third public hearing, I would like to declare the hearing for SMD 3-AN Annex 51 open. No one has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SMD 3-AN Annex 51 is closed, and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest. Of four possible votes, weighted according to proportional financial obligation for the properties, four affirmative votes were returned, the ballots approved, the proposed assessments, and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion C.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, the fourth public hearing, I will declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 62 open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one signed up. Close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 62 is closed, and request the results of the ballot tabulation.
And again, there is no majority protest. Of 13 affirmative votes, weighted according to proportional financial obligation for each property, 13 affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved, the proposed assessments, and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Thank you.
Motion D.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, item 9.1.
And that's to receive the update on city council priority projects.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Christopher Jordan presenting the signing at this evening. As the council is aware, every two years, we go through and review the city's mission, vision, goals, and priority projects. You adopted these last in March of this year, and about every six months or so, we come back and do a report on the status of those priority projects. Reminder for the audience, the city's mission statement is provide exceptional services that enhance the quality of life for our residents and promote a thriving economy in an efficient and cost-effective manner. And our vision statement about prioritizing superior quality of life for all that builds upon the community's diverse heritage, diversity and heritage through safe welcoming and connected neighborhoods with a variety of residential, educational, and employment choices and amenities that create a sense of place. To implement these, we've identified four city goals that deal with a vibrant community, a safe and resilient community, a high-performing and financially stable city government, and a city with infrastructure that meets its current and future needs. This year, we adopted, or you adopted, 30 high-priority projects which will implement these goals, vision, and mission statements. And again, we do the reporting twice a year, so this will cover the first half of the calendar year. The projects are organized into five topic areas, including civic amenities, transportation, community development, community safety, and city operations. I'll be highlighting a few of these projects for you this evening. First up, as the council is aware, adopted last year by the voters of Elk Grove is Measure E. Over the course of the last six months, we, the city prepared a first-year expenditure plan, which was adopted into the current fiscal year budget. We also had the execution of the MOU with Consumer CSD regarding sharing of those revenues for the priority projects identified during the outreach and engagement efforts with voters and residents. We continue work on the proposed new zoo in Elk Grove project. Up here on the screen is the site plan that was prepared and routed around late last year for the project. I'm excited to say that we continue to iterate on the design, and the architecture for the buildings is coming together very nicely, and we hope that in the next few months, we'll be able to share more details in the updated plans. We're also feverishly working on the environmental impact reports and the finance plan and all the other moving parts and pieces that will allow this project to come forward for you early next year for consideration and potential action. Work is also continuing on the Elk Grove Boulevard Streetscape Phase 2 project from School Street to Waterman. We're making good progress. Fortunately, Jeff's not here at the moment, but we're making great progress with S M U D on the undergrounding for the utilities along the corridor, and hope to have some good news on that in the coming months. Continuing with Old Town, as you're aware, revitalization efforts along Railroad Street continue. In addition to Dust Bowl, which is the building picture here, construction has begun on the cottage units in between here and the building that's further to the south that later this fall should hopefully open as a new restaurant in Elk Grove. Very exciting general plan amendments and future zoning revisions for the Camera Road Corridor and the implementation of the Camera Road Urban Design Study, which you saw a couple of years ago, is nearing the finish line. Next month, the Planning Commission will consider those amendments, and a recommendation to you on them and adoption of the environmental impact report for those amendments, and we're hoping by the end of September to have it before the council for your consideration. The zoning regulations will follow in a few months as we're continuing to work on that and begin outreach with the development community on their feedback on the regulations. Over the last few months, we've started, and hopefully this fall, we'll have for you a draft electric vehicle transition plan for city operations. This will include adding new private and public EV chargers at city campuses around the city, including here at City Hall Campus. It'll also address how we move into electric vehicles for our overall city fleet, both on the operations side as well as on the police side. Just a couple of other things to highlight, we continue on our diversity, equity, and inclusion measures across city government as well as in the community. And actually, in October, we'll be launching our continuous improvement program for city staff. We'll begin looking at means and methods to include, to advance new programs and new innovative techniques and solutions across the organization to improve efficiency and delivery and cost effectiveness. So that concludes the presentation this evening. I and other staff are available for questions if you have them.
All right, thank you for that excellent update. I will open up the public comment opportunity at this time. I do not see anybody signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity. Any questions or comments from colleagues? I'll start to the left. None?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, for that presentation, and we've got a lot of irons in the fire. Nice to see some things progressing, so, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Don't have a lot. I appreciate the update, and thank you very much, Mr. Jordan.
Councilmember Robert?
No, I just want to thank Mr. Jordan for providing the overview, moving in the right direction on a lot of projects, especially in the historic Old Town portion from School to Waterman. Really good news. Thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
Kind of just echoing my colleagues' comments, pretty excited for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, and looking forward to seeing the growth in Elk Grove.
All right, I echo the same comments. Thank you, great presentation and update. We will move on to our next item.
That'll be item 9.2, Consider an Ordinance Amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Joe Simone, your Purchasing and Contracts Manager. I'm going to present item 9.2, Consider an Ordinance Amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 3.42, Contracts and Purchasing. Recommended action before you tonight is receive information from staff. Introduce and waive the full reading by substitution title only, an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 3.42, Contracts and Purchasing, demand a solicitation threshold and delegated authority thresholds for city purchases. So a little background, city council previously has adopted regulations and policies and procedures associated with making city purchases for services, supplies, and equipment. Our last major update to signature authority was in 2008. We have had a couple of minor changes since that, but they were mainly on administrative side. Earliest year, city contracted with Schoberg-Evershank Consulting to do a review of the purchasing division. And we also, at that time, there was a survey put out by the City of Sacramento, it was an informal survey for the various cities in the area to talk about their purchasing thresholds as well. Report back from Schoberg-Evershank report, city has established sound purchasing framework that aligns with public sector leading practices. However, one of the things they did note was that our delegated authority thresholds at the executive level were behind those of other jurisdictions in the area. Likewise, out of the Sacramento, City Sacramento survey, our micropurchases and our single-source were also the lowest in the area. So the result of this review, we had a meeting with the Audit Committee, and it was recommended that we raise the threshold for city manager authority to 100,000, and our micropurchase single authority to 5,000. So looking at the review, the table one is what came out of the Schoberg-Evershank proposal or report. As you can see on the left-hand side there, our level at 50,000 ranks at the bottom. Likewise, on the micro-single solicitation purchases, our 3,000 threshold is also at the bottom. So with that in mind, staff went back and went through the chapter to look at where we would make those changes. Under Article 2 Contract Authority for City Manager, the recommendation is to move that from 50,000 to 100,000, and likewise increase the changer authority from 55 to 110. Also within that contract authority, you receive two reports at every meeting on the purchase order report, as well as the contract report that are made under city manager authority. So with that raising to 100,000, we look to you, those reports will change, so purchase orders will be from 10 to 100,000. So we'll report those out to you, and we'll report contracts out to you up to 100,000 as well. Under Section 3 Consultant Professional Services, no changes to the actual authorities there, but we are, do want to increase one aspect in that it's an exception that we have for third-party development studies. We want to increase that value from 100,000 to 200,000. Purchasing commodities, there is a couple of changes there. With moving our, requesting to move our single quote limit to 5,000, we also want to increase the administrative regulation from 5 to 10. That's the procurement procedures that are established by the city manager under that administrative regulation. So we recommend those go from 5 or less to 10,000 or less. That would necessitate a move for the informal bidding, and we would raise that from 5,000 to 50,000 to 10 to 50,000. No changes to our formal bidding, but we do want to make one change, and that's to one of the exceptions, and that's for best interest to the city. The verbiage we had there was a little ambiguous as to whether it allowed the city manager authority. So we are wanting to adopt the language that we have used for our general services, and that would be when the judgment of the city manager or city council is applicable, given the monetary limitations of this chapter, compliance with the procedure is not in the best interest of the city. So it may all match up with those, and it'll give city manager authority that he needs to make exceptions. Purchasing of general services, just two minor changes. Once again, this would be in relation to the micropurchases, so administrative relation, regulation going from 5 to 10, as well as the informal going from 5 to 10 as well. Two other cleanup items, acquisition disposition of interest in real property, and actually this relates to leasing property, both leasing city property and leasing of private property. Want to raise the limit from 1,000 to 2,000 before we have to do a competitive proposal to lease city property. And then to get in line with the $100,000 recommendation, lease of private property for the city manager would increase to 100,000 as well. One last item is surplus commodities and equipment. Currently, the city manager has the authority to surplus equipment up 2,000. We'd like to raise that to 5,000 as well. So recommended limits versus the competitor agencies, so this goes back to the original charts. If you now notice, if we raised to 100,000, that puts us in line with Ranter Cordova, a little bit ahead of Gulf, Folsom, and Citrus Heights, and still HoloBeblo, City of Sacramento and County of Sacramento. And on the micro-single solicitation, it now puts us in line with all the other agencies that are in the area. So recommendation, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 3.42, Contracts and Purchasing, demand solicitation thresholds, and delegation authority thresholds for city purchases. That concludes the presentation. Any questions or direction?
All right, thank you for your report. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
I do have a...
Yes.
Go ahead.
Please.
Okay. Sir, so if you could do me a favor and back up to the, and I don't even remember specifically what it was. It was about putting out to bid. It seems as though it was worded in the negative, and I kind of need you to review it.
On the...
Going out for, going out for three bids, I think, is what it was. Hang on. Formal bidding procedures, when it is determined that compliance with the procedure is not in the best interest... So, so this, it currently reads in the, in the large font, and you want it to read in the...
No, currently, in the verbiage it currently is in there, it's, it's a little ambiguous, and it doesn't necessarily state the city manager. It almost refers to the city council, and it's at the threshold of 50,000. So it doesn't allow the city manager to make an exception when it's in the best interest of the city. So this verbiage is what we have for professional services and general services, and this would allow the city manager to make those exceptions up to his limitations.
I'm stuck with the "is not in the best interest of the city." So you're saying that if compliance with the procedure, if it's not, if compliance with the procedure is not in the best interest of the city, then the, excuse me, the city manager then has authority? Is that how, I'm just a little confused by the negative.
And Councilmember Spees, let me, let me explain if I could. So this language is currently in the code in two different sections, as Mr. Simone has explained. So for professional services and for what we call general services, which could be a combination of, think of it as parts and labor, that the code allows with this language, which has been in there for 10 or so years, that if either the city manager or the city council, depending on the thresholds, decides that competitive bidding is not in the best interest of the city, in other words, if you feel you can get a sole source or better deal without bidding, it's not worth the effort, whatever the case may be, this language allows the city manager to not go out for bidding. And it is intentionally couched in the negative to say, if the city manager decides that it is not in the best interest to submit bids, then he or she can skip the bidding process, dispense with the bidding process. This is essentially a cleanup item, a portion of the code that deals with commodities, widgets, if you will. If we're, if we're buying, you know, 1,000 widgets and looking for the best price, that's typically done on a low bid. But the code was a little bit unclear on whether or not the city manager had the authority to dispense with bidding if the prices were anticipated to be less than $50,000. This simply aligns it with the remainder of the code. So the city manager could say, I'm buying 50,000 widgets, for lack of a better term, and the city manager decides, I know that I can get a good price on these widgets without bidding, I'm going to skip the bidding because it is not in the city's best interest.
True.
Got it?
And I get, I get that. No, I get it. I guess where I'm getting tripped is when we say, compliance with the procedure is not in the best interest of the city. I just don't know that, it's just weirded awkwardly because never, or not complying is never in the best interest of the city. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, it might be. It might be.
And I'm wordsmithing. I understand that.
It might be. It might be in the best interest. So let me, let me suggest how it might be in the best interest. For example, a lot of times, the Fleet and Facilities Department will buy vehicles, police cars, motorcycles, whatever the case may be.
No, I get all that. I'm talking about the semantics of saying that compliance is not in the, in the best interest. And I know, again, I know I'm playing semantics. That's where I got tripped. If that's the right way to say it, and that's the way it's done throughout the rest of the world, that's fine.
Yeah.
I was just trying to understand why I was saying, wait a minute, not complying with the code.
No, no, no. That's not, that's not...
Compliance with the procedure is different.
The bidding procedures.
I get you. I get it now. I'm fine with it.
You sure?
No, I totally am. It's just, it never looks good to say that I'm not going to comply with something. That's all. And so that's what I got tripped on. Okay.
Good.
I will, I will act on the advice of legal counsel. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I think you still have. Yeah, I just had a comment.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Before, yeah, we'll go to council member soon.
Anyway. So, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Simone, and the information comparing to the other cities. You know, I just, just want to take a moment to acknowledge, you know, part of this too, us raising the limit, yeah, has a lot to do, I think, with how we've grown as a city. But I also say, I think it is a testament of our council's trust in city manager and leadership here at the city. So I didn't want to go without acknowledging that. I personally feel comfortable with raising these limits as well. Thank you. Yes, I'm happy to, well, I got to read the whole thing. So, motion, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of...
Wait, we didn't take public comment. Did we take public comment?
She did, yeah.
Oh, pardon me, I'm sorry. I missed it. I was probably thinking about your question.
No, no, no. That was done before my question came out. You got tripped on my negative wording.
Introduce and waive, excuse me, introduce and waive the full title, full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance amending the Elk Grove Municipal Code Chapter 3.42, Contracts and Purchasing, to revise dollar amount thresholds for purchasing authority and solicitations.
A second.
Did you have questions before we...
No, no. I mean, Councilmember Soon answered all the questions that I was about to ask.
Okay.
And Vice Mayor Spees added more clarity, so on the advice of council...
On the double negative.
Did he really add clarity?
That would be a better word for me, but compliance. Anyway.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Did you have any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, gosh, are we already on 10? Council Comments Reports, Future Agenda Items. We'll start with Councilmember Robles. Anything to report?
Did I have a regional standing we need today, but nothing to report?
Okay. Councilmember Brewer?
Sacramento Public Library JPA Board meets tomorrow at 3 o'clock at virtually and at Board of Supervisors rooms. DAS.
Excellent. Councilmember Soon?
Waive my report. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Spees?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
I will waive my report, and we will adjourn at 6:58 PM. That might be a record. Thank you.